This is the Wednesday, June 7th, 2023 morning session of the Portland City Council. Good morning, Kealan. Please call the roll.
Ryan.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Maps.
Rubio.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here. Now we'll hear from legal counsel on the rules of order and decorum.
Welcome to the Portland City Council. To testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance on the council agenda at portland.gov/council/agenda. Information on engaging with city council can be found on the council clerk's webpage. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during city council meetings. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. A timer will indicate when your time is done. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, council may take a short recess to reconvene virtually. Your testimony today should address the matter being considered. When testifying, state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. For testifiers joining virtually, please unmute yourself once the council clerk calls your name. Thank you.
All right, first up is communications. First item is 455.
Request of Eric Collarin to address council regarding construction on Southwest Capitol Highway. Eric was going to join in person, I believe. Is Eric here?
All right, next individual, please. 456.
Request of Tristan Sakamoto to address council regarding accountability and logical approach.
Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. My name is Tristan Sakamoto, and I'm a City of Portland employee, although I'm here on my own time today. On September 13th, 2021, I submitted a religious exemption to a vaccination policy, which was a condition of employment for city employees that was to be fully implemented on October 18th. My exception was approved on October 6th. Twenty-three days of anxiety, stress, and emotional turmoil when my livelihood was placed in the hands of people unqualified to assess my religious beliefs. Twenty-three days of wondering if your belief in bodily autonomy outlined in Resolution 37492 only applies when it comes to a woman aborting a child. Twenty-three days of headaches, tears, and prayers because you believe you hold the right to what I do with my body. For six months, you required discriminatory testing for unvaccinated employees. You targeted us, ostracized us, with knowing fully that vaccinated employees were spreading COVID within city buildings. This was your attempt at creating a safer workplace. Vaccinated employees weren't required to get tested or wear masks, and within the six months, in any given two-week period, there were dozens of exposures in city buildings. Exposure data was collected by the city. This data was analyzed and reports were developed to clearly identify the problem, yet you did nothing to rectify the wrongs. Why did you target us, Mayor Wheeler? Was it because we refused to follow the narrative? Because we were strong enough and had enough courage to stand up for what we believed in? That is certainly what it feels like. For 577 days, the illogical, irresponsible, and inequitable policy remained in effect. On May 1st, a citywide email was sent by Kathy Bless indicating the vaccination requirement had been lifted. The city was no longer requiring employees to be vaccinated against COVID-19. Receiving this email was bittersweet. I immediately was overwhelmed with feelings of gratitude, frustration, and anger. The citywide email was a missed opportunity. An opportunity to hold yourselves accountable and apologize to those of us that were targeted. Whether it was being forced to take a vaccine that had not been adequately tested, those employees who lost their jobs because of your illogical policies, or those of us that waited while unqualified strangers decided our future. Do you think it is appropriate to send an email to lift a vaccine policy without so much as a simple apology? What type of leader doesn't admit when they've made a mistake? I've sat in front of you several times politely requesting that you review the ineffectiveness of your policies, and you dismiss me each time. The one time you pretended to entertain me and request I email you directly, you ignored me and wouldn't supply me with logical reasonings for your policy. What will you do to right this wrong, Mayor Wheeler? You should hold yourself accountable and offer an apology to those that were negatively impacted by your poor policies. Let's be honest, you owe us so much more, but most of us would be grateful for this simple gesture of leadership and accountability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next individual, please. 45... I think we're seven.
Request of Bridget Green Charles Simka Johnson to address council regarding the slow $5 million.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Bridget Green Simka Charles Johnson. When I originally wrote about the slow $5 million, the piece of paper, I don't know if you get a copy of the piece of paper, I did, I think, maybe I sent it electronically. Anyway, it said, "If BLM matters, why the slow $5 million?" And I'm pretty confident that we all believe that Black Lives Matter. Maybe some people who are against public health policies could never actually let those words come out their mouth. But we believe that Black Lives Matter. However, with the long lag time it takes from signing up for public testimony until now, we have to say, "Which slow $5 million?" And of course, we're going back to that very messy crisis of democracy where you couldn't decide if Reimagine Oregon should get the promised $4.8 million or not. And, you know, there was some concern that, you know, in some people's eyes, Commissioner Maps was the major villain. But let me tell you, thank you for coming around to doing the right thing, but you all had egg on your faces. The idea that for a very long time, a $5 million program, $4.8 million program to assist the Black community in Portland couldn't get properly implemented, and we had to have this huge messy public event is shameful. I'm not sure I agree with every request you get for an apology, but I hope that apologies will go out to Reimagine Oregon, to Justice Raji, and especially that as part of that apology process, there'll be better communication with leaders in the Black community. I think the timing of that was such that it happened maybe right before we found out that some powerful white men have great wives that can move around $400 million into the 1803 fund. So while you have many things, and we're watching the last few years of you being commissioners, pretty soon, there won't be any more city commissioners. There'll only be city council members. I do hope that regardless of which bureau portfolios you have, you'll look at the work that Prosper Portland is doing to activate that $4.8 million, and that all of you will think of thoughtful ways to help amplify Black voices about leveraging that with the 1803 fund. So there's a lot more that can be said, but I think I have to wait seven more weeks to sign up. Good luck.
Thank you. Next individual, please. 458.
Request of Chris Bakoros to address council regarding Northeast Portland community concerns and Mount Olivet Baptist Church safety concerns.
Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Hi, thank you for having me. I feel intimidated. I'm speaking extemporaneously, and I realize I know very little about how policy is made, but I definitely feel that policy is destiny. The last 30 years, I've had property in Northeast Portland. It's called the South Elliott area. I don't know how many people of you are familiar with it. It feels like not many because in all of my attempts to address our community's issues, I get a lot of response, "Where are you exactly?" So take Broadway from Second Street and MLK and travel all the way over to perhaps Albina, you call it, and historically, it's an area that's been so hugely underserved, but a powerful, powerful part of this city. If you go all the way back to the 1890s and you find the demographic, the population that served Northwest Portland, the docks, the tanneries, the liveries, the stables, the hotels, the train stations, those people lived in that area. 1905, city council came through and designated a clean sweep of that area in order to provide a more amenable property for the 1905 World Fair. All those people, those service people, poor people, moved into what is Albina, South Elliott, Boise. And they were gardens, they were houses, they were little tiny, poor functioning communities. And then city policy coming through in the 40s, 50s, and 60s, the Guild Lake Transitional Housing, 10,000 people from 1939 to 1940. Vanport, another 10,000 people, immediate housing provided between 1939 and 1940. Those areas were swept, and again, those people moved into this area, Boise Elliott Association. So when we bought property there in 1906, it had been decimated by the Memorial Coliseum, Recreation and Entertainment for the City. It had been decimated by the freeways, transportation, Robert Moses. And what's left now, I don't know if any of you, I've lived there 30 years, and I can't recognize the neighborhood, right? I can't tell you where Flint is and where it comes and ends. I can't tell you where Hancock ends and disappears into the freeway abyss that's currently being possibly exploited as an additional highway space, freeway space. But I know that since 2016, I've been living with a situation where people who have no other housing also live there with us. And it's kind of untenable and intolerable, and people like me who are small landlords have to exodus, and when we leave, those small, affordable housing options in that area are going to disappear utterly. I ask you to think back on how policy is destiny and how you can get smart lawyers to write smart policy that will either implement or supersede the federal regulations that are handicapping us right now. Thank you so much for your time.
And I'm glad you're here. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
And then I believe the last is 459, please.
Request of Andrew Biggs to address council regarding homelessness, safety, and emergency response.
Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Okay, thank you. Andrew Biggs. So, yeah, I own two businesses in the Pearl District, and I live in the Pearl District. And in April, sometime mid-April, I was walking to work, opened my door, and there was a homeless drug addict in the door. I asked him to leave, and he attacked me violently, almost choked me to death. And I would have died had my neighbor not recognized me. There was plenty of people standing around, but no one does anything because this has become normal in this city to walk around dead people or OD'd people or people that have defecated on themselves lying on the sidewalk. So I sat there for a few minutes being choked to death. And finally, my neighbor ran across the street and saved my life. I called 911, and the person was the worst person I've ever dealt with. They just basically had no compassion or care. They said, "The police aren't coming. Just let it go. Leave it. Leave it as it is." And I encourage you to listen to that 911 call because I made a complaint about it, and they're under investigation for not following the protocols of that call. So I proceeded to freak out on the phone until the police came, not letting it go. The police finally came, and they were fine, although they didn't, the guy, they didn't do some normal questioning or follow-up on all that. And so basically, I came down here, I went to the court hearing. I told them, you know, they should be prosecuted for, you know, attempted murder, but it's not because I didn't, I only had a black eye and a cut ear and a bruised kidney. And, you know, but none of that is bad enough for a felony charge. It's only like, if I had gotten stabbed or shot, maybe it would have been a felony. But there was some, he did say some derogatory words to me. I'm just going to say it, I'm sorry, but he called me a faggot and a gay, whatever. You know, he just started saying all these horrible names to me. So then I complained about that, and then they're trying to make that charge felony. So that makes it, you know, a felony charge, but anyways. I just need this street to be cleaned up. The camping, the 24-hour new law that you guys are about to pass, I think you're voting on it today, is like the drug, it's a drug problem in this city, 100%. Mental health is a minor issue on the homeless people, mostly drugs. You got to take care of that first. That is the number one priority. You guys made a haven for drug activity in these tents. I would encourage you to do whatever you can to get that and put the money into drug treatment centers or some kind of response to that.
Yeah, thank you for being here, first of all. Thanks for having businesses in Portland, and thank you for sticking it out, and I'm sorry.
I just found two 10-year leases in the Pearl.
Thank you. That's awesome.
Two months ago. And this happened to me the day after I signed the lease.
I want you to be successful. I agree with your assessment that the drug problem is becoming untenable, that it's becoming a more major influence on public safety as well as livability on our streets. I've been calling for all of us at all levels of government to pay attention to the fentanyl crisis. There was a time when I felt like I was a bit of a lone wolf howling into the wilderness, that I think it's readily apparent to everyone that this is a significant issue. And we're not going to solve it alone at the city level. I had a meeting just yesterday that included the governor and included a representative of our congressional delegation, it included the Multnomah County Chair, and we're all in agreement, this is a serious issue, and we need to step it up to address it. And so I want you to know, you're not coming in here and talking to people who don't hear you or don't care. I absolutely agree with you, and it does need to be resolved and with a great sense of urgency. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Commissioner Gonzalez, I'm sorry, sir.
Mr. Biggs, Grace's backpack from my office is in the back of chambers, and if you don't mind, if she could get your contact information. I'm responsible for BoAC, which is 911 dispatch. We're going to have our team look into this, concerned in what you've shared today. And so I appreciate your testimony on that. We will be following up on the 911 aspect of this. More broadly, the state of our city is unacceptable when it comes to crime and desensitized. Really, we've been desensitized to random acts of violence, and we've got to turn it around. And so all I can tell you is we take very seriously every part of what you said today. We are working with our, you know, other public partners to address this as directly and as urgently as possible. So please keep testifying. I'm sorry it was required. I'm sorry what happened to you. And we're in it together, turning the city around. So again, thank you for testifying. Grace will, can't miss her, she's pretty tall in the back, so please share your info with her.
Commissioner Ryan also has a go.
Yeah, Andrew, I just want to thank you for your courage for being here and for following through on going actually to the court case itself, and also for your commitment to Portland by signing the leases. A day doesn't go by where there isn't a story somewhat like this that comes to all of us. And I think, Mayor, I don't, I hope you don't feel like you've been a lone wolf for a while. We've been pretty united gradually on this council over the last two years. And anyway, thanks for being here. Appreciate your courage.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please. Time Certain 460.
Accept Travel Portland 2023 Annual Report.
Colleagues, I'm pleased to jointly introduce this item with Commissioner Rubio, who represents the city on Travel Portland's Board of Directors. As part of the city's long and productive partnership with Travel Portland, 1% of the city's transient lodging tax goes to support destination marketing and promotional programs. In addition, Portland's Tourism Improvement District collects a 3% fee on overnight stays at hotels as well as at vacation rentals. With oversight from the lodging community, local governments, and industry partners, Travel Portland invests these revenues to promote Portland as a destination, attracting visitors, creating jobs, and boosting spending at local businesses. This annual report to city council is a requirement of the city's agreement with Travel Portland, and I always look forward to hearing about Travel Portland's efforts and the state of the travel and tourism industry in our city. The travel, tourism, and hospitality industry generates over $5 billion in annual spending, helping to support thousands of jobs and businesses in Portland. With that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Rubio. Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor. As our city liaison to Travel Portland, I want to highlight the incredibly stellar efforts that Jeff and his team are making to remind Portland, and the world for that matter, why we remain a world-class city and a destination city for everyone to visit and enjoy. And because of these efforts that they are making, recent media coverage for our beloved city has been fantastic, and I'm sure that we'll hear more about that from the team, and they'll go into detail in the report. But I just want to highlight what an incredible job that Jeff and staff are doing to get our amazing story out to the public at large. We all know that we have challenges as a city. We're all actively working on that and undertaking all those things, and that's our reality, but it's also important to share the fuller story of what Portland has to offer and the progress that we're making as we recover. So I also want to lift up the incredible work related to diversity that Travel Portland is doing, and not just within, but also supporting through grants, through recruitment, partnerships with our events and film office. There's a reason that this is one of my favorite presentations every year. I was just so looking forward to this today, and I feel that we are so incredibly lucky to have this partnership with this organization who not only loves our city, but also recognizes the power that our small businesses, our neighborhoods, and our independent spirit of Portlanders, you know, that you bring to this city. So just wanted to thank you for all the incredible work. Really looking forward to the presentation today, and I will turn it over to you, Jeff, to get us started.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And I want to thank you all for coming to our annual awards lunch. It was a great celebration of some of the wonderful people in Portland doing creative things. So we'll jump right in. Next slide. This is always fun for us to come and do our annual report. There's, Portland is coming back. There's still work to be done. And I have joining me Megan Conway, our Chief Strategy Officer, and James Jesse, our Chief Sales Officer, to share some of the program of work. Next slide. I'll start with our four priorities that we developed during the pandemic and how they've evolved. Our focus is to rebuild leisure demand and convention sales, and you will see that both programs will require that we do it through a lens of EDI, and very importantly, rebuilding the destination reputation. And as we all know, we need Portlanders and Oregonians to remember how great a place this is to live. Underpinning all of this is that we assure a sound financial structure. Next slide. The economic impacts of tourism. Next slide. I've shared the economic impacts of the three-county region from Dean Runyon many times, and while you see the large increases in purple and that we're almost back to 2019, this isn't the Portland, the story of Portland. Washington and Clackamas County were not as hard-hit, and their recovery has been much faster. You'll also see how local taxes remain stubbornly low. Next slide. This slide tells the story of our hotel struggle, focusing on the central city, which includes the Lloyd District. The box on the left is the occupancy for the calendar year ending in December. You see Portland at the bottom in yellow, a very nice increase in occupancy. You see Minneapolis and San Francisco in red. Red is bad, but they are similar to Portland. In green, our competitive set of cities, you can see their occupancy is 15 or more points higher. Green is good. And the box on the right is year-to-date through April. Yellow and on the right is year-to-date through April. Yellow and red remain bad, and green remains good. I hate to be so simplistic about it, but it's pretty stark on the page. Seattle isn't recovering as quickly as they would like either, but certainly better than Portland. Next slide. The next four slides are a graphic representation of the lackluster recovery. This is for the central city rooms sold. 2019 is in green at the top, and 2023 is in red in the middle. Next slide. This is the number of rooms sold in the entire city of Portland. We sold 11,000 more rooms last, than last year in April, only 11,000, and almost 80,000 less than 2019. The next slide. Revenue for the central city, which we both rely on for lodging taxes, and, uh, central city revenue, the hotels in the central city represent 70% of the total hotel revenue. And in April, we were 8.4 million less than the year before. Uh, and next slide. Revenue for the city, 39.5 million in April versus 50.4 million in 2019. It's very tough news for our hotel economy. Um, we are, we do have a meeting with the hotel ownership groups tomorrow to share some of this information, so we are working very hard with those partners to make sure that we're sharing our efforts and that we understand what's going on. Next slide. You know, we've really focused on our internal EDI efforts and certainly our external as well. Next slide. I'm very proud of our accomplishments in hiring. Uh, before the pandemic, we had 75 employees. We went to 38. We came back up. We're now at 70 again. And you can see that we've always been a majority female team at Travel Portland. However, we've increased the diversity of our staff from 19% pre-pandemic to 36% now. And that's been through very intentional work by all of our team. Next slide. These are just two examples of the training and activities we're undertaking to continue and learn and grow, and grow our staff, and have underrepresented communities tell us their stories. I'll now turn over to Megan Conway to share the, some of our programs and successes. Megan?
Thank you, Jeff. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I will share our sentiment research and the work we are doing to build a positive narrative about Portland. Next slide, please. And next slide, please. Thank you. Our work is guided by research, and our most recent consumer sentiment survey results show perception of Portland holding steady or moving in an upward direction. These results were captured in April with a national polling size of more than 1,100 people with a higher concentration on the West Coast. Next slide, please. When it comes to tone of media coverage about Portland, the perception of it being positive has been trending up over the last four quarters, and the dip in this last quarter is not significant due to sample size. Next slide, please. Portland's appeal as a vacation destination has also been on an upward trend since Q4 of 2020, and the Q2 2023 appeal is up significantly from the first quarter. Next slide, please. What this slide communicates is that our visitors really do love Portland. Intent to return, if you have been here before, has reached 2019 levels. Next slide, please. And one more, please. Thank you. Now, switching to local residents, in 2017, research found that 88% of Portlanders encouraged friends and family to visit, making them great ambassadors for the city. Next slide, please. Fast forward to January of 2023, and new research shows that Portlanders are less likely to recommend Portland with only 61% encouraging visitation. There are some nuances to the study, which has a sample size of 600, 300 of whom live in Portland, and 300 in Multnomah County but outside the city, and in Clackamas or Washington Counties. Results show that Portland residents and younger residents are more likely to recommend the city as a place to visit. Additionally, how recently people visited downtown has a direct correlation to whether or not they recommend the city. Next slide, please. We have assembled a Travel Portland task team to determine a strategic approach to get more out of these younger urban-dwelling locals in order to raise awareness of downtown events, food, beverage, cultural, and retail happenings, to increase attendance at events and attract traffic to local businesses, and to get more people to advocate for the places they love in downtown. We believe, in turn, this will create more fans and advocates, create momentum that will lead to more recommendations and invitations to visit, and ultimately create more visitors to downtown. Next slide, please. With the summer season approaching and local and visitor traffic to downtown increasing, Travel Portland is proud to open a new visitor center in downtown Portland this month. Next slide, please. The transition to this location in the West End was guided by downtown foot traffic counts and the desire to be in a location near a large number of hotels and visitor anchors like Powell's Books. Next slide, please. We know some of you will join us for the opening, but here's a look at what you can expect. Starting June 23rd, we'll be open Thursday through Sunday through July, and transitioning to seven days a week in August. We also will extend to be open from Thursday to Tuesday for the Fourth of July holiday weekend. Our internal teams and partners from LRS, Industry, and Swinerton worked on an ambitious timeline to help us open in time for the summer visitor season, and we'll be soon adding a mural by local artist Nia Musiva. Next slide, please. And now for an update on our impact on Portland's reputation. When we built staffing levels backup, we hired first on the PR team, knowing that enhancing the city's reputation was critical to success in all other areas of our work. You all should be receiving our Good News newsletter, and behind the scenes, there is a team of five on our Public Relations Team pitching positive, diverse, and thoughtful story ideas to domestic and international media. In the first three quarters of this year, the team has worked with 96 visiting media, secured more than 250 pieces of positive media coverage about the city, and had more than 700 media engagements that incorporated a diverse story, business, or other angle, which aligns with our organizational goal of ensuring Portland's tourism economy impacts all communities. Knowing there is still a large volume of negative media, the takeaway is that since July of 2022, our targeted efforts are generating more positive articles than the number of negative pieces of coverage for the first time since the pandemic. Next slide, please. To highlight coverage earned by the team, you can see here a piece on Portland's recovering and expanding culinary scene that focuses on pop-up restaurants. Travel Portland has been leaning into the city of pop-ups angle with visiting media and through media events in San Francisco, Los Angeles, tonight in New York, and Seattle. And not only does the angle have a strong reputation or representation for communities of color, but it also has connections to Portland's prominence as a food cart and street food capital. On the right, Laura Begley Bloom, a journalist Travel Portland has had a long relationship with, names the Forbes Best Places to Travel in 2023, and pulls coverage from other writers to describe each destination. Next slide, please. The online version of the San Francisco Chronicle featured Portland in a spring travel feature in February. San Francisco is a key market for visitors to the city. And National Geographic UK highlighted Portland's urban wineries and DIY mentality, and this is one of several influential publications, in the United Kingdom promoting the city and supporting direct air service from London to Portland on British Airways. Next slide, please. The Daily Beast provided a frank and honest look at the city and its challenges in a piece that describes why Portland is still the best city in the country. And amidst all of this media coverage, I would be remiss if I didn't mention just how big of a week the city is having with seven James Beard Awards, recognizing the strength and diversity of our culinary, our current food scene and culinary media scene. To highlight a few, in the reality category of the media awards, All the Homies Network, a collective of BIPOC food-focused creators and small businesses led by filmmaker Mike Trong, bested competition from the likes of Top Chef and Bon Appetit to take home the top award. In the Chef and Restaurant Awards, there was a first for the city as Top Chef alum Gregory Gourde and the team behind Khan marked the first win for Portland in the Best New Restaurant category for his wood-fired Haitian concept. And Vince Nguyen of Berlus took on Best Chef Northwest and Pacific for his contemporary Vietnamese hotspot. We have much to be proud of. Next slide, please. Changing gears, the additional 1% Tourism Improvement District funding the council approved has enabled us to support the Portland Events and Film Office. Next slide, please. This year, Travel Portland funded film efforts with nearly $160,000 for programs designed to develop the local film industry and attract outside projects that have economic impact and drive overnight stays. The office helped coordinate nearly 350 filming permits and had more than 450 engagements with organizations interested in filming in Portland. Travel Portland also participated in several TV productions, including a segment on KTLA in Los Angeles, Adventure Cities on the Discovery Channel, and Places to Love with Samantha Brown on PBS. Next slide, please. Knowing that a robust series of large signature events, balanced with mid-sized and smaller community events, help establish and maintain a lively and appealing downtown, we are thrilled to partner with the team leading the events work at the Portland Events and Film Office. This year, Travel Portland financial, provided financial support and technical assistance through a $100,000 contribution to their grant program to help mid-sized events scale up. We've budgeted another $100,000 toward this effort in 2024, and continue our support of My People's Market with a five, or $50,000 annual contribution. Next slide, please. And if we could go one more, please. In addition to these partnerships, Travel Portland is sponsoring key events like the Winter Light Festival that activates downtown in a traditionally quieter season, as well as Pride and other large events on the waterfront. We also support the Good Food Foundation, which relocated its awards ceremony and mercantile from San Francisco to Portland in 2023. A nice win for the city. Next slide, please. Travel Portland has made a concerted effort to invest in the community, especially in infrastructure that will attract visitors and enhance their experience in Portland. This year, we awarded $140,000 in grants to the Portland Art Museum, Lonsu Chinese Garden, Kickstand Comedy Festival, Milagro Theater, and the Portland Street Alliance. We have also invested in placemaking efforts around the central city, from helping to fund the mural at the end of the Blumenauer Panestrian Bridge, to supporting the public engagement for the re-envisioning of O'Brien Square. Thank you for your interest and your partnership in this work, and I will now pass things to our Chief Sales Officer, James Jesse.
Thank you, Megan. Next slide, please. Uh, good morning, Mayor, all Commissioners in attendance. Thank you for this opportunity to present our efforts surrounding leisure marketing, convention sales, and Travel Portland's preferred partnership with Sport Oregon. Next slide, please. As an organization, we work hard every day to address each part of the sales funnel that's generating awareness via proactive public relations and advertising, driving engagement with mid-funnel tactics, and partnering with online travel agencies to help convert lookers into bookers. But in the next few slides, I'll focus on our top-of-the-funnel advertising campaign. Next slide, please. To complement this work, we also invest in content partnerships. And because Portland's culinary scene remains our top travel motivator, we're working with Eater, which is delivering Portland food content to their readers in key markets of Los Angeles, San Francisco, and Seattle. Next slide, please. Before the pandemic, we focused our advertising efforts during the winter, which is when the lodging community needed help the most. But now, our needs are year-round, and so is our Always On Campaign, This is Portland, which targets key West Coast feeder markets with 40 seasonal videos we've aligned to travelers' interests. Next slide, please. We're also finding innovative ways to support our smaller, our smaller limited-service hotels, and we're committed to driving incremental leisure demand their way. To do so, we have partnered with AHOA, the Asian American Hotel Owners Association, to create and fund three marketing programs that are available to AHOA members located within Portland city limits. The first two shown here are elevating AHOA's members' visibility on online booking sites. As you can see, these pilot programs are delivering both a room night lift and a solid ad on, a solid, uh, return on ad spend. And the third program, a partnership with Waze, is literally driving last-minute bookers directly to the front door of AHOA properties. Next slide, please. Uh, switching over to convention marketing, which focuses on the needs of meeting planners and convention delegates, highlighting the components that rank high on the list of reasons planners choose destinations, Plan on Portland campaign provides big stats to elevate Portland's hotel and convention center offerings. Next slide, please. Portland's largest-ever convention marketing campaign will be featured through paid social, Google, Google advertising, and a host of trade media. Editorial coverage, sponsored content, and webinars will also be part of a multi-level strategy designed to refocus planners on the positive attributes of Portland. Next slide, please. The Scent of Portland, this will be our surprise and delight element of the Plan on Portland campaign. Will the scent of solar sun kiss remind customers of our leading sustainability efforts? Or will the smell of crisp currency remind them of zero sales tax? We'll soon find out when this direct mailer hits the road, and the, uh, internal favorite so far in our office poll is the Hotel Lennon scent.
Hotel Lennon.
Uh, next slide, please. Uh, moving on to convention sales. Next slide, please. Uh, coming out of pandemic, we were confident that 2023 could be a rebuilding year, primarily due to the success with future advanced bookings. A few examples are of some recently hosted citywide campaigns are conventions that brought tremendous economic impact to Greater Portland. TESOL International Association convened in March and brought over 7,000 delegates from 100 countries. Specialty Coffee, Specialty Coffee Association returned to Portland in April and represented another group that performed to pre-pandemic levels with over 9,000 delegates and 10,000 room nights consumed. The Government Finance Officers Association was the most recent group to convene in Portland just a couple of weeks ago, also proving to be a major lift citywide with over 5,000 delegates and 14,000 room nights consumed. I'd like to take a quick moment to, uh, pass on thanks to the mayor and our Local Government Officers Association for their partnership and support in securing this business for Portland and serving as gracious host for your industry association. Next slide, please. Taking a closer look at Specialty Coffee Association, the true impact of this event was felt citywide as Portland City Hotels registered two consecutive nights with hotel occupancy topping 93%. Likewise, from average daily rate, as increases were $44 or up to 28% over last year. Next slide, please. Equally exciting, more upcoming conventions, uh, that prove our intentionality surrounding equity, diversity, and inclusion are paying dividends in the form of future bookings. Shown here are bookings that resulted in recognition of Travel Portland's focus on supporting, supporting diverse meetings and those in the accessibility space. It also takes a partnership of local organizations, uh, to show that Portland has a network of local support from affiliated companies and community groups. And to that end, I would like to recognize and thank the Native American Youth Association, the Portland Chapter of Noma, and a host of local minority chambers of commerce for their work and support of our efforts to convince these groups that Portland was their right choice. Next slide, please. Uh, this fiscal year has also netted some impression, some impressive future convention wins for Greater Portland. The first major announcement was Portland being awarded the 2030 Women's Final Four and the Women's Basketball Coaches Association Annual Convention. Led in partnership with Sport Oregon, the Motor Center, and a coalition of local universities, this win was years in the making and a major turning point for the local hospitality community. Next slide, please. Following the success of the Women's Final Four announcement, Portland backed this effort up by confirming the largest program that will come to Portland to date. The National Education Association will fill some much-needed short-term dates and will impact Portland hotel segments from downtown, Lloyd Center, North Portland, and the airport corridor. This program was too large to hold solely in our own convention center, so the combined partners came together and presented a multiple facility option utilizing P5 venues as satellite locations, thus pushing the impact of this convention, uh, throughout local businesses throughout Portland. Next slide, please. Uh, in conclusion, I'll report on Travel Portland's preferred partnership with Sport Oregon. Next slide, please. Travel Portland is close to entering the third year of our preferred partnership with Sport Oregon, with the intention of providing incremental economic benefit to the Portland region through sports tourism. This annual investment allows Sport Oregon the infrastructure of a program of work to promote Portland and solicit future sports business at national trade shows and funding to support events locally, setting them up for success and connecting these events to the local business community. Next slide, please. And in just three short years, Sport Oregon has revived and expanded Portland's list of hosting major motorsports events. The return of IndyCar racing, the introduction of NASCAR racing with the Xfinity Series, and the debut of Formula E racing in June of this year, which positions Portland as the first US city to host this international event. And coming in 2024, Sport Oregon, the Oregon Convention Center, and Travel Portland will play host to the Sports ETA Annual Convention, exposing hundreds of tournament organizers and events rights holders to the city of Portland and all of our sports and tournament venues. This will be a great opportunity to keep the momentum moving forward as we look to build our resume of hosting sports events inclusive of youth and amateur sports, all divisions of collegiate sports, and professional sporting events. Next slide, please. Uh, that'll conclude our presentation, and I'll turn it back over to Jeff Miller for final comments.
Thank you. We're happy to answer. Any questions you may have? That's okay. We're happy to answer questions if you have any.
It was a slide that had, um, that showed there was a dip in March, um, in the hotels in 2023. And so I was just curious about that. It looked like a month of dip, and then it went back up. And so I'm hunching here, which means I have no idea what I'm gonna say next. But my hunch is that maybe during spring break, we didn't get the leisure travel, and there are less conventions during that time, but...
It's a combination of leisure and conventions. Uh, I don't know specifically the details of all of that. One of the things that we are really looking forward to is understanding how leisure comes back in the summer. Uh, that is a, a big base of business for us, obviously, in the summer. The convention calendar this- The convention calendar this year is very good, so.
That was my through line, was that we're the variables are more clear when it's a convention, and the variables are obviously more mixed when it comes to leisure. People telling their friends to come visit, that I think corresponds with that a little bit. So that's what my little brain was doing when I was looking at your slides. Is that kind of on the right track?
You're right on.
Okay.
Right on.
There's a junior parade today, so we're trying to figure out the logistics on how to be here most of the day and then there for a couple joyful hours.
I understand.
Back to leisure.
Sorry, we're trying to figure out how to make the schedule work. Commissioner Gonzalez.
I so appreciate your report today. Unfortunately, we have some very difficult scheduling items today, and but the importance of your industry for the city, everything you do every single day, and projecting a positive image for the city as we confront some very difficult issues on our streets is deeply, deeply appreciated. So I'm going to wrap it up, and that's all I'm going to say right now, but I so appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Do we have public testimony on this report?
We have one person signed up, Charles Rich Crane Simka Johnson.
All right. Thank you, and we're going to say nice things about you in a minute. So go ahead and take a seat, cool your heels. Thank you for the report. Welcome back.
Charles Rich Crane Simka, and indeed, we are going to say nice things. That was the most beautifully disguised, blue-collar and minority-status report we've had in a long time. And the reason I say that is because we live in really polarized times, and somebody will be like, oh, that fucking tourism stuff and wine. But this report is about blue-collar workers, minority women and men, and jobs.
Can I ask people, please, not to yell? Thank you.
But that point of exploitation of low-wage workers is relevant. We know here in the city, we try and get we're trying to move towards a living wage. So we always need to be mindful of when we're having success, how people are doing delivering living wages to the people who are changing those linens, the linen scent winner in the Benson, in the dossier, in the Dunaway, and also what our city can construct so that the people that work in those places will remain employed. There won't be a financial catastrophe where overly speculative owners of these hotels are at a stain. So I'm not asking for any public funding. I'm saying I'm hoping that there are conversations with Joe Weston. We know one of our local big guys is tied up with opening up the Ritz, but the good reputation in Portland also means that we find a way for those people who still have a strong asset picture to kind of cushion one another and make sure that increasing wages are available to the people who are doing the prep cook work at Berlou and at Khan. So this is critical. I think the only thing that would maybe dress it up more for next year is if we don't just talk about dollars, but do talk about those people, the employment levels, how does hospitality rank compared to whoever our biggest employer is, OHSU, Providence, whatever the latest is, and that varies from the city limits across the area. But I know you've got some scheduling stuff, so we'll stop there. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'll enter. Well, actually, Jeff, do you know off the top of your head how many employees there are in the travel, tourism, and hospitality industry? Do you have a rough estimate?
About 30,000 incremental jobs because of tourism.
30,000, and that's here in the city of Portland?
Yes.
So 30,000, so it's a major sector of employment, and thank you for raising that issue. I'll entertain a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
Commissioner Ryan moves. Can I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Gonzalez, seconds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the rule.
Ryan.
Jeff, Megan, James, thank you so much. That was a great report. I got a lot out of it. And just to highlight a couple things. Once, first, I should start by saying thank you for moving so quickly to get the visitor's center open. It looks so lovely. And I noticed it's in the West End, which really is a part of downtown that feels more vibrant, and so I think you're going to get a lot of activity. So anyway, this is real value-added. I always would say to Jeff, like, we have to demonstrate first that we're feeling safe and excited to be downtown to attract others. So thank you for walking your talk. That was a really great addition. Also, your advocacy and your alignment with working with Commissioner Rubio's office on activating the night markets, and of course, the Winter Light Festival was such a joyful experience because it is a dreary time of year and to see so many people out. So thank you for your partnership on some of these activations. I also just have to say your partnership with Sport Oregon is really obvious and really deliberate, and I appreciate that as well. So there's so many other things I could say. I do want to get my hands or perhaps my sense, my smells, on this marketing package that you're sending out. And I was surprised maybe to hear that linen smell is the number-one hit in your office. So I have to see if I agree with that. Anyway, great work. Thanks for being here.
You didn't vote.
Oh, I didn't vote. Of course, I accept the report.
Gonzalez.
I accept the report. Thank you.
Rubio.
I want to again thank Jeff and Megan and James for that great presentation and for all the hard work that you do every day to lift up our city. We really do have an exceptional, exceptional team at Travel Portland. I've been incredibly impressed in the several months I've been having the honor of working with you all, and I feel that we're incredibly lucky to have your talents and passion, working very actively on behalf of our city. And it helps to remind us all about what we love about our hometown and also why others love it, too. And I just want to make a plug for everyone to visit the Travel Portland website to learn about all the incredible events that are happening all over the city, some of which are in great partnership with our events and film office, and also just to encourage your families and friends to get out there, enjoy the summer in our city. So just thank you for all you do. I really look forward to seeing the work progress, and as Forbes put it, to see Portland reemerge like a phoenix. So I'm happy to vote aye.
Wheeler.
Well, I can't say enough good things about Travel Portland. Obviously, the work that you're doing is critical to the recovery of the city, and I have experienced firsthand the great work that you're all doing, and I appreciate the focus that this report clearly illustrates in terms of where you think the best opportunities are and how we can uplift the most people in our community, and that comes through loudly and clearly. The tide has turned. That's the good news, but nobody's popping champagne corks here. We have a lot of work to do, and we know it, and I think that's frankly one of our strengths at this point, is we know it, and we're working together to solve the challenges that yet remain in our recovery. And I look forward to visiting your new visitor's center. I think that looks pretty great and one more step in the right direction. So thank you for your leadership. I'm happy to support everything you are doing and accept the report. I vote aye. The report is accepted. Thank you. Colleagues, before we move on, I just have a point of order for legal counsel. We can hear but not vote on emergency ordinances with only three members present. Is that correct? Or can we not hear them with fewer than four members present? I believe it's just the vote, though. Is that correct?
I would like to call a lifeline on this one and call Lyne.
Call a lifeline, and then meanwhile, I'll ask my colleagues. Could you, I need, when is your heart out, Commissioner Gonzalez?
I'm confirming. I thought it was 11 o'clock, but we're seeing.
Okay, so here's what I'll do. Assuming that we can hear items with fewer than four members present, I think we'll push forward and hear the items, but we may continue them to this afternoon, and if we don't have time this afternoon, we'll continue them to next week, assuming legal counsel agrees with that. I just want to keep us moving.
I'm sorry. Will you repeat that?
So I'm just trying to figure out how we get through our work, understanding we'll be with fewer than four commissioners present. And so my baseline question is, can we hear emergency ordinances without four people present? Can we do it with a mere quorum?
Okay.
And then, assuming we can, if we can't get through everything this morning, I'm going to continue some of these items to this afternoon, and if we cannot get through them this afternoon, I will continue them to next week. I just want to keep, make sure we keep moving through the agenda.
Great.
Because it's a big one. Good. So with that, we won't hear these right at the moment, but I'd like to go to the consent agenda. Commissioner Rubio has just told me that she is not going to pull 466.
Yeah, I've had my questions answered.
Very good. So are there other items that have been pulled from the consent agenda?
We've had two items pulled, 465 and 470.
Very good. Please call the roll on the remainder of the consent.
Ryan.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
All right. The consent is adopted. We'll go back to the second time certain, please. That is items 461 and 462 to be read together.
Amend contract with Perkins and Will Architects Incorporated to include design services through construction of planned renovations at the Veterans Memorial Coliseum and increase amount by $4,869,800. Item 462, amend contract with Wenaha Group Incorporated to include owner's representative design and construction management services through construction of planned renovations at the Veterans Memorial Coliseum and increase amount by $782,633.
Colleagues, I'm pleased to introduce this next item, which pertains to the approval of two contract amendments related to ongoing work to renovate the Veterans Memorial Coliseum. In late 2019 and early 2020, the city, Metro, and Multnomah County approved amendments to the visitors' facilities in our governmental agreement, which included $40 million in funding to renovate the aging arena. The funding comes from dedicated tourism facility dollars, which are generated by the transient lodging tax, which we just heard about in a slightly different context. These investments are critical to the continued operation of the Coliseum and will help us make badly needed improvements to the reliability and dependability of the building while also greatly enhancing the patron experience. Carl Lyle with the Office of Management and Finance will present items 461 and 462 together and give us a preview of what's in store for the historic arena. Good morning, Carl. It's good to see you.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, so really, these are technical amendments. They're contract amendments, but I wanted to take the opportunity, because we haven't shown what we're working on at Coliseum for quite a while, and it's actually very exciting. So I have a few slides for you. So this is perhaps a pretty significant understatement, right? So, you know, that was 1977, so it's a big day, right? The Coliseum has seen frightfully few major investments since that time. Really, many of the systems in the building are original still, mechanical systems, the seats, things of that nature. We're very far out of compliance with current codes, current accessibility requirements, and a long list of other things. So we're working hard now with our partners at Rip City Management to invest $50 million-ish into critical repair replacements and upgrades to the 63-year-old historic building. That's funded from transient lodging taxes through the Visitor Facility Trust account, and we're looking forward to construction beginning in 2024 and taking two to three years to implement. So I wanted to give you just a little, you know, I think the city's work has a long history of kind of working and looking and considering different options for the Coliseum. I would call this kind of the recent, within the last 10 years, kind of look at what the council has said. In 2012, in 2012, coming on the heels of a large process led by the mayor to look at many different options for possible reuse or replacement of the Coliseum, council came to the conclusion that it really is best suited as a multipurpose arena. It serves the community best in that capacity, which is what it was designed for, and that we should be pursuing investments to sustain the ongoing life of that building. And so that's what we've been working on since then. In 2015, the VMC Options Study looked at in detail with detailed market study and architectural feasibility work a number of different options, and again, came to the same conclusion that really that building is best suited for what it was designed to be, which is a community-serving multipurpose arena, and that it actually does pretty well. And with strategic enhancements, it could do even better and continue to serve the city for a long time. In 2019, we managed to secure a funding commitment through the Visitor Facility Intergovernmental Agreement, which is a three-party, City of Portland, Multnomah County, and Metro agreement to provide up to $40 million in 2019, which would escalate out to be around $50 million in 2024 in funding for those improvements. And then just last fall, we were here with an extension of the Coliseum operating agreement with our operators, Rip City Management. And I should point out, Chris Oxley is behind me, senior vice president with the Portland Trail Blazers and Rip City Management. He didn't want to sit up here with me, but he's here. If you have very specific questions, you could probably drag him up. And I also wanted to let you know that Rick Nosman, who is the city's design services procurement supervisor, is online, I believe, if there are technical procurement-related questions. So I'm not totally alone, even though it looks like that. So the case for renovation is really probably based on five key points. The economic impact of continuing operations. In 2017, that was estimated at around $30 million a year of spending that was induced by events at the Coliseum. Obviously, with the right kind of upgrades, that could be increased, but it's not insignificant. The building's operationally sustainable from a financial perspective. It doesn't generate the full capital it needs to, you know, to replace those systems, but it has generated a modest operating profit every year for the last eight or nine years, with the obvious exception perhaps of 2021, the COVID year, when everything was closed, when it, along with all of our venues, lost a significant amount of money. But it's back on track since then and doing quite well operationally. There are some really unique advantages that come with having two arenas on a campus. You can have simultaneous events, which is great, so there's more offerings and more activity and more going on, which is good. But also, there are certain types of events that can use both arenas at the same time. So these are events like the Davis Cup in tennis, which simultaneously use the arenas, and the more recent PK-80 and PK-85 NCAA basketball tournaments, which were able to use both arenas at the same time, bring a lot of people to town, ton of teams in town, huge amount of work from our operators to pull those off, and had a really significant impact, nationally televised events. It's a community asset. There are a lot of things that happen, and this picture shows that in that building, that really don't have a lot of other opportunities or places to happen. Many people in this room probably graduated in that building, either from high school or college or university. It supports amateur athletics. Every year, the OSAA wrestling championships are there, often dance and drill, sometimes basketball, various different things of that nature. And we have a community event program there in partnership with our operators that provides reduced rates for nonprofits and community groups to use the facility at cost. And then finally, the historic status. So following the effort in 2009, 10-ish, when, you know, demolition was being considered, frankly, the, a local group of historic preservationists and architects organized to nominate the building to the National Register of Historic Places, and it is listed historic structure. And then a few years later, the National Trust for Historic Preservation declared the building a national treasure and really elevated its status. This is to say, there's a strong following of support for the building from the local architectural and historic preservationists, as well as veterans' community, for whom the building's named, that felt very strongly that it needed to be preserved and continued. So that actually is one of the big reasons, I think, to continue investment. So this slide is just to say it's been kind of a long and winding road to get here. These original contracts were set up pre-COVID. We didn't really know whether the funding was going to be secured to actually implement all the work, so they were set at really conceptual design level costs, and so that's really the reason they need to be now increased to take us all the way through design permitting construction of the improvements. COVID obviously happened, created a huge amount of uncertainty about the funding sources and the timing, and it was really just earlier this year that we finally had the certainty in the projections through the Visitor Facility Trust account that we were going to be able to implement these projects and then issue the bonds backed by the VFTA, the Visitor Facility Trust account, next year and make this work happen in '25, '26, so, or '24 through '26. So that's kind of how we got here. The first product developed was a reinvestment strategy by the design team, really looking at four different goals, trying to balance, you know, efficiency of operations and mechanical functions, reliability of the building, as well as enhancing the guest experience and support, but also recognizing and reinforcing community connections and trying to be part of an evolving neighborhood where a lot of different things can happen. And I think everybody wants to see things change around the building. That strategy said, continue the ongoing work of sustaining investments in the building to keep it running on an annual basis, which is funded out of the Spectator's annual normal budget. But then with these investments, the $50 million, to really focus on critical deferred maintenance, but also upgrade the fan experience and the user experience by addressing the woeful conditions in the seating bowl and replacing all those seats, and then all the code-required improvements that go along with that. And then there's a step three, which is not funded stuff that's further out. There are a lot of things that would be great to do to that building that are not currently in the package, but they are included in that strategy. So this is the proposed scope. We won't go into detail here, but you can see the kinds of things that are included in the work that's scheduled to be done in '24 and '25, that's being designed under this design contract we're looking at. The middle column are things that may or may not be possible with the current resources at hand, so some of those might move into the left column. at hand, so some of those might move into the left column, some will move into the right column. And then there's a whole list of great things that would be, things that would be great to have at the building that we're not going to be able to get to, and we know it at this point. Things like dealing with the aging glass curtain wall of the building, which, as you can imagine, is not the most efficient thing, being single-pane glass. I think there are four thousand sheets of glass on the building, something like, it's totally an amazing number. It's just mind-boggling. But new loading docks, things like that, that would be future projects. So I wanted to give you a little eye candy. This is actually very exciting, the kinds of things we might see out of this work. So we've got some before and after pictures. So this is kind of what the building looks like today in Winterhawks hockey configuration. And with the seating bowl replacement, this is kind of what you would look at, all new seats, hand railings, a lot of safety upgrades, and then, you know, accessible seating areas that actually meet code, meet the ADA requirements, both at the event level and at the cross aisle. Another view, looking at that cross aisle specifically, this shows the really horrendous current situation regarding the accessible seating. Those are completely non-standard accommodations there, and we get a lot of complaints about it. And so the improvements would make that fully compliant, completely meet the targets. And also, if you look in the, in the kind of the background there, it creates the opportunity to start to create some premium and sort of group seating areas, which the Coliseum's never really had, and the Winterhawks are very excited about and would be beneficial for a variety of different events and operations. So that's the kind of thing that we're looking at. And then, oh, and then on the concourse, there's also some interesting opportunities. With the reseating project, we're actually going to be reducing the overall capacity a little bit of the building, so we'll have fewer seats, but it'll be a much better experience. That creates the opportunity to actually eliminate some of the existing exit stairways that take you down to the lower level on the concourse and eat up a lot of space. And so that creates opportunities for future other uses of the concourse and a lot of improvements there. You can also notice the larger restrooms, if you look very closely, where it says the Winterhawks P there. That restroom wall actually comes out about three or four feet, and so the restroom is much larger and like the old doors are gone, right? And you can see, and it's just a much better experience all around. So the requested actions today are actually pretty simple. They're about approving these two contract amendments with Perkins and Will Architecture. That's the main design and engineering contract. And then Wenaha Group, which is a related contract for owner's representative and construction project management services, helping us to oversee all the work that's going on. So that's the question, the request. Next steps are, you know, today's approval of those design-rated contracts. We continue working on that. It is an emergency ordinance because of just the timing and not wanting to lose time. We're pretty much out of resources on the existing design contracts, so to keep things moving on pace, which is important in the design and construction world, we do request the emergency clause. We'll be back next year to request approval of the bond issuance funded by the Visitor Facility Trust account, so that will have to happen. Those bonds are currently imagined to be sold in twenty twenty-four in the summer, so we'd be back in the spring next year for approval there. Construction would happen in twenty-four and twenty-five. And then, of course, this isn't the end of the line. There are more things that could happen as the building starts to perform better and there are more resources. So that's my presentation.
Very good. Colleagues, questions?
Yeah, just a couple real quick.
Commissioner Ryan.
Yeah. When you did the before-after, was that in the middle column, most of that, or was that in the first column? So that's actually going to happen, or did I just get teased?
Most of that's first column. There's a couple of things in there. They're kind of middle.
Which is, which ones?
So, so we, so one good example is, you know, the curtaining system at the top of the bowl, which is one of the most unique architectural features of that building.
Let me just cut to the chase. I know we're short on time. The seats, are the seats in the first?
Seats are in.
Thank you.
Seats are in.
And then the other one is, have you been in dialogue with the good people at Albina Vision Trust? Because even though this is one container within the big area, it's a very important part of the restoration of the souls that are working on this project.
Absolutely.
So it's really important that we always have, keep them in the foundation level of the dialogue.
Yeah, so over the, you know, past few years, we absolutely have been, and I'm sure you're aware, there's a whole city kind of technical group that meets with Albina Vision representatives on a pretty regular basis to kind of review the work that they're doing. What I can say is, the, you know, their community investment plan and their visions that have been put out, which are incredibly compelling for redevelopment of that neighborhood in a very conscious and, you know, social justice sort of reparations kind of look. They have all, at least so far, kept the arenas. And we've asked very specifically, you know, are the arenas, you know, in this vision? Is there room for the largest event district in the state to remain in this vision? And the answer thus far has been, has been yes. I don't know that that's changed. We would certainly want to find out. But these improvements are all within the four walls of the building. They don't do anything to preclude, you know, the redevelopment around the arenas, which has been our understanding of the goals of Albina Vision Trust.
Yes, and that's a very important part of that area and what happened in that area.
Absolutely.
So I would hope that, in the spirit of going forward, that someone from their board could come and testify in support of what we're doing. So I just want to make sure that, that's my feedback, is to make sure that the conversation is, I'm not saying it's check the box, but we don't want that. We want it to be engaged.
Sure.
All right, thanks.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
So, thanks for the report. Corporate suites are not contemplated in this renovation. What the, could you just memorialize kind of what the, what that excludes, this facility, from what type of events that, you know, essentially makes it ineligible for?
You know, I know that- So not, not having suites?
Right.
Is that the question?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this might be an interesting opportunity to see if Chris wants to talk about it, but I think, you know, we do have Moda Center next door, right? Which is providing that kind of level of experience for that level of event. So, you know, the Coliseum can be something else and really is something a little bit different. So the types of events and things that we have typically had at the Coliseum and we imagine to continue to have, concerts, hockey, you know, amateur sports, various different tournaments, things like that, they don't really need the corporate suite, and I don't know that there would be a lot of desire for them. We are in pretty regular conversations with the Winterhawks, and this is, you know, this is their primary home. They play all their home games there. There's new ownership there. They're very excited about this building. They are very in tune to wanting more ticketing options and premium kind of options and maybe some club areas and those, those group, you know, party kind of areas and perhaps even some like club spaces on the lower level that aren't, you know, in the seating bowl, that they can kind of package with a premium ticket experience. They're very excited about all that. There hasn't been any real strong interest in the sort of traditional suite environment.
All right, thank you.
I just have two brief questions, and Chris, could I just get a head nod? I assume you are supportive and your organization is supportive of this. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you for that, for nodding in the affirmative. And then just a technical question. So I assume during the renovations, the Winterhawks will not be able to use the facility. Has that been sorted out?
No, I think, I think the goal would be to have minimal disruptions to their season by phasing the work during the offseason and, you know, perhaps adjusting the beginning part of their season a little bit for more away games and things like that. But no, the goal would be to have the bulk of the hockey season take place.
Terrific. Thank you. Kealan, do we have testimony on four six one or four six two?
We have one person signed up, Bridge Crane Simka.
Thanks, Carl. Oh, it's only ten forty-three. Good morning. I'm Simon Simka Bridge Crane, and this socialism is maybe beautiful, but it is a little interesting that with the former state treasurer sitting on the center stage, that we don't just explicitly talk about ROI. I didn't go deeply into the report, but when we're talking about spending public dollars and not talking about where the wins are, I mean, we know that Bill Gallagher is no longer the Portland Winterhawks. They've restructured under new ownership there. But just spending these millions of dollars so that we can have a continuing history of indoor graduations might not be the best spend in a city where occasional weekend headlines are eight people dead from drug overdose. I think, having a look at the whole package, I do think there is community value, but I really believe that spreadsheets, ROI, the cash flow through the VMC, the Veterans Memorial Coliseum, has a place here because we're definitely, it seems like, talking about dollars going out, and I'm not sure exactly if you've made it clear to constituents what the source of these tax dollars are. Are they part of just the Portland general fund? Are they strictly from the transient lodging tax, et cetera? So it's probably a good enough package. We can prove it without getting those clarified, but I do believe that the high standards you hopefully set for yourselves mean that if anybody tries to pigeonhole you later, buttonhole you and find out what are the sources, revenue sources that this goes, that funded this project, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. And just to clarify, the answer to your question is, it comes from the TLT, Transient Lodging Tax. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any further testimony on either of these items? Please call the role on item four six one an emergency ordinance.
Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Carl. That was a great report. I appreciate it. And I've been to a few events there over the last year in ways it needed. It's pretty dilapidated in terms of the seating. I actually ripped a pair of pants when I was sitting in my seat. So it's, and everyone, I think, is experiencing that, and so it's definitely high time for that. And I think the middle column has a lot of value, and so it'll be good to stay in touch about that. And I appreciate the fact that you heard me on how important it is to keep meeting with and listening to the good people around Albina Vision Trust, because that space is sacred to them in terms of the history. So I really want to make sure we stay on that. Anyway, thank you. I vote aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Rubio.
Thank you, Carl, and all the folks that were involved in managing the Visitors Facility, the Visitor Facilities Trust account. These contract amendments will allow for implementation of really much-needed improvements to the Coliseum to improve accessibility and meet those code requirements, and it'll be a safer result and more accessible building. So I'm happy to see these investments being managed. I also want to acknowledge you, Carl, for all your extensive knowledge and your great work on some of the city's biggest assets and managing a lot of key partnerships in Portland, and for the help that you personally give us in understanding these, things like these. So I really appreciate your work and happy to vote aye.
Wheeler.
Well, I think it's exciting to think about a renovated Memorial Coliseum as being part of the city's efforts to reinvigorate the Rose Quarter. And as we've heard, this supports the Albina Vision Trust goals for community reinvestment, as well as supporting other events and activities that happen at the, not only at the Coliseum, but also at the Moda Center immediately adjacent. This is one small part of the effort, and I think it's compelling and it is much needed. I look forward to updates on the project. I vote aye if the ordinance is adopted. Please call the role on four six two, also an emergency ordinance.
Ryan.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
All right, the ordinance is adopted. Thanks, Carl, for your good work on this. And thanks, Chris, for being here. We really appreciate your efforts as well. Let's go to, why don't we go to the consent agenda next? And specifically, is there one of these that you said that was related to the fire chief, and you had the chief on board?
They, I think it stayed on consent.
Oh, that was the four six six. Okay, then forget that. Let's go to item four six three, please.
Accept guaranteed maximum price of eight million nine hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred and thirty dollars from Raymore Construction LLC for the construction of the Mill Park Development Project.
Colleagues, the Mill Park Construction Project will provide playground, picnic, and fitness areas, open space, and a community garden accessible to the Mill Park neighborhood and others. Once fully developed, Mill Park will serve one thousand four hundred and forty households in the area, eight hundred and eighty-one, of which are not currently served by other Portland Parks Neighborhood Service areas. Before we hear from Chief Procurement Officer, Beko Taylor, who will walk us through the report, I also want to hand this off to Commissioner Ryan to share some remarks about this project. Commissioner Ryan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Actually, you mentioned most of my remarks, so let me just scan quickly. I want to thank you, Robin Johnson Craig, I think I saw you out there, for your hard work on this project, for Commissioner Rubio, for taking the reins from Commissioner Fritz to keep this moving along. And really, to me, what's exciting is it's close to an elementary school and it's in East Portland, where we definitely need to keep focusing on building assets. So I turn it up back to you. Thanks.
Beko, it's all yours. This is a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning. To the Commissioners, for the record, my name is Beko Taylor. I'm the Chief Procurement Officer. On April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, City Council approved ordinance one nine zero three seven one to complete this project, which was in the pre-construction phase. On November nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, procurement issued a repressible proposal with the due date of December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. This particular contract was published under the alternative bidding methodology, so this was not a low bid. Raymore Construction had the highest cumulative score and was the recommended awary by the Independent Evaluation Committee. Since then, on April twenty, April twentieth, twenty twenty-two, I'd like to acknowledge that council passed ordinance one nine zero seven eight two, which authorized the Chief Procurement Officer to pilot inclusive contracting policies designed to increase contracting with minority and women-owned firms. We believe those ordinances passed by council contributed to the city's partnership with Raymore Construction today because we were able to subsequently apply some goals. More specifically, the city's Regional Workforce Equity Agreement and the Contract Diversity and Inclusion Program applies to this solicitation with a twenty-five percent aspirational goal. So even though Raymore is an African-American-owned firm, we know that at least twenty-five percent of this project will be completed by certified subcontractors. Raymore anticipates sixty percent of this project total will go to equity contractors. So I would like to acknowledge council for providing us with the tools to walk down a path to reduce barriers for minority contractors like Raymore and open the doors for contractors like Raymore to create business for other disadvantaged business owners. With that said, I'd like to welcome Robin Johnson Craig, Capital Projects Managers for Parks. If you have remarks, Robin?
This is your moment.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Council clerk, can you please pull up the presentation? Mayor Wheeler, I'll wait for the presentation to be loaded. This is a momentous occasion for this project. I'm super excited, and I had a sudden illness, and so I decided out of caution to stay remotely here, so I apologize that I cannot be in person today. I was really looking forward to this, so very excited about this presentation to you. Mayor Wheeler and members of council, my name is Robin Johnson Craig. I'm a capital project manager with the Asset and Development Division of Portland Parks and Recreation, and thank you, Beko, for presenting this item. We are here to tell you about the exciting new park project for the Mill Park neighborhood and to request council to accept the guaranteed maximum price of eight million nine hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred and thirty to Raymore Construction LLC for the construction of the Mill Park Neighborhood Development Project. Current report, RFP number zero 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 four zeros one seven six six. Next slide, please. The Mill Park project site is located in the Mill Park neighborhood, east of I-205, between Southeast Stark and Southeast Division, and closely adjacent to the southeast one-twenty-second avenue. The site is a six-point-one-seven acre undeveloped neighborhood park in a park-deficient area of East Portland. The parkland was transferred to the City of Portland ownership in a transfer agreement from Multnomah County in nineteen eighty-six. Next slide, please. Mill Park is located within the blocks bounded by southeast one hundred and seventeenth, southeast Mill Court, southeast one-twenty-second, and southeast Lincoln, located directly next to the Mill Park Elementary School in the David Douglas School District. Existing park contains an informal walking trail and several mature trees, but is otherwise undeveloped. Next slide, please. Mill Park has the highest diversity in student population in all the David Douglas School District schools, with seventy-seven point five percent diversity in enrollment. Two hundred and ninety-eight of four hundred and thirty-nine students, or sixty-seven point nine percent of Mill Park students, qualify for the free and reduced lunch. Two hundred and twenty-nine of the four hundred and thirty-nine students, or fifty-two percent, are enrolled in the English as a Second Language program. Next slide, please. In July twenty twenty-one, Parks acquired the property at nineteen forty-nine, southeast one-twenty-second, highlighted here in red, which provides a direct linkage and a new front door to southeast one hundred and twenty-second avenue, which is just really incredible. The property acquisition also directly supports the safe routes to school crossing on southeast one-twenty-second avenue at southeast Stevens, which is highlighted with the yellow arrow. We are currently coordinating with PBOT and TRIMET to support additional streetscape improvements to the southeast one-twenty-second frontage, to improve pedestrian and bike safety, and to move the bus stop to the park- to improve pedestrian and bike safety and to move the bus stop to the park's front door. The acquisition property has been leased for free to Cultivate Initiatives, a nonprofit houseless service provider, shortly after the acquisition, beginning in August of 2021, to use the space for workforce and community services and storage. No overnight shelter was provided on the acquisition site. Cultivate Initiatives was provided a year's notice for the upcoming construction efforts to start in August of 2023. Next slide, please. The park improvements are intended to create and inviting new community space for the public and will be a major step towards providing equity and park access and development to all Portlanders. The Mayor Reed Landscape Architecture Team has done an amazing job supporting Portland Parks and community needs and the design development of the park. The key features of the future park include a playground, fountain, community garden, Portland Lou, a fitness area, Chinlawn Courts, art, a loop path, a quarter-mile loop pathway, picnic shelter and picnic tables, and central lawn areas and landscaping. Next slide, please. The new Mill Park will serve a culturally diverse community, rich with ethnic and language diversity. For example, at the adjacent school, as I mentioned, over 25 languages are spoken. Our community engagement effort included five advisory, project advisory committee meetings with a 16-person committee representing neighbors, the school, religious communities, and cultural communities. We also hosted three community gathering events with a broader community, and by partnering with Division Midway Alliance, we were able to reach communities who speak a total of seven languages. The DMA partnership supported a process that was equitable and inclusive by reducing barriers to engagement and ensuring that the ultimate park design reflected the communities it's intended to serve. Next slide, please. Funding for the project was allocated in three phases. Commissioner Rubio allocated 6.5 million in 2020 and additional 3.9 million in 2021. Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. Commissioner Ryan allocated 2.82 million in 2023 for a total project funding of 13.22 million. Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. And by the way, these will be the first Chinlawn Courts in the entire PPNR inventory for the special sport, which is the traditional national sport of Burma. Next slide. Raymore has been an incredible partner and has collaborated and worked with PPNR and the Mayor Reed Landscape Architecture Team to support pre-construction services for the Mill Park Project. As part of the CMGC contract, procurement services at council's direction instituted the Regional Workforce Equity Agreement on this contract. And as Beko mentioned, Raymore, as the prime contractor, has committed to meeting the equity goals of the RWEA, which is 25% overall to equity firms. And Raymore has gone above and beyond and is targeting 60% overall. Raymore has been instrumental in outreach efforts and developing respectful workplace training as part of pre-construction services, and we're excited to have them on board for this project. Our, the next slide, please. Our purpose today is to ask council to accept guaranteed maximum price of the eight million nine hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred and thirty to Raymore Construction LLC for the construction of the Mill Park Neighborhood or Mill Park Development Project. Procurement report, RFP number 00001766. Our understanding is that with council approval, the action will be effective immediately. We request council's approval of this report, which will allow PPNR and Procurement Services to pursue this construction manager general contractor construction contract with Raymore Construction for the development of Mill Park. Next slide. Thank you very much for having me. We will have four members of the public that that have volunteered to testify today, including Heather Craig from the principal of Mill Park Elementary, Jeff Morland, president and owner of Raymore Construction, Lisa Stresta, the director of the Division Midway Alliance, and Trevor Hopper, our Chair of the Mill Park Neighborhood Association and a member of our Project Advisory Committee.
Very good. Why don't we get to invited testimony, please? Beko, do you want to call people up?
Yes. In person, we have Lisa Stresta, Director of Midway Alliance, and Trevor Hopper. On the, online, we have Heather Craig, Principal of Mill Park. Can we start with Heather Craig, please?
I am so excited for this project. As Robin said, the Mill Park and David Douglas community is super diverse. We have over 25 languages here, and so our Burmese community has an apartment complex right there, and we're going to have Chinlin. I just think it's such an incredible opportunity for our communities to just flood in. I can say that having any Mill Park event here is is successful. Our families are are very grateful for this, and I'm just so appreciative. We're going to be able to have our after-school sun programming go over to the park. We're going to have be able to have little field trips from our school to go over as well. And so it's just very exciting for a community, and I really appreciate this investment in David Douglas area in East Portland.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Heather.
Can we go to Jeff Morland, President of Raymore Construction, online?
Hi, Jeff.
Hey, everybody. Good afternoon, good morning, Mayor Wheeler, council members. For the record, many of you know me, but for the record, my name is Jeff Morland, and I'm the President of Raymore Construction. I want to take a brief moment to acknowledge and encourage the importance of funding projects like the Mill Park Development Project. Mill Park is one of the most underserved neighborhoods in the city of Portland, in proximity to one of the last major minority census tracts in the state of Oregon. Mill Park Elementary School is adjacent to the park, consists of 76% minority enrollment, and is one of the top five diverse schools in the state. Mill Park Elementary is not just a school, it is a community hub that offers services to nearly 500 families, which will be expanded to over 1,000 families with the building of this park, including after-school and summer activities in coordination with, like you just heard, this Multnomah County Sun Program, immigrant and refugee community organization, free lunch services throughout the summer, weekly food pantries, and a host of numerous community events. The building of this park is vital for this community and will continue to demonstrate Portland's commitment to supporting communities of color. As a community-based company, Raymore was excited about being selected as a CMGC for this project as we have spent the last four years working intimately in this community with the building of the Triment's Division Transit Project. The city's commitment to utilizing alternative procurement methodologies is vital to the achievement of equity and inclusion as communities of color not only receive benefit from the enjoyment of the park itself, but tangible economic benefit by having opportunities to participate in informing the design and the building of the park. I can't emphasize enough the importance of communities of color being allowed to participate in the building of projects that directly impact our communities. Having employment, career development, and entrepreneurial opportunities for meaningful work that directly impacts your community is transformational for all communities, especially communities of color. These opportunities for meaningful work is a hand up, not a hand out. Raymore employs well over 100 people, primarily from communities of color, with 70% of our management staff and 50% of our field staff being women and or people of color. Having a community-based economic engine helps to breathe life into our communities as people of color are able to see people who look like them employed, running businesses, and building their, building in their own backyard, which again is transformative to historically marginalized communities. I just want to encourage our city leadership just to continue the work of being, bringing real benefit to our communities of color through the way that you are procuring and delivering projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Lisa Stresta, Director of Midway Alliance.
Yeah, good morning, Mayor Wheeler and council. It's good to be back presenting, testifying in person after a long time. I have been testifying virtually, but it's great. For the record, my name is Lisa Stresta. I'm the Executive Director of Division Midway Alliance, and I am glad to be here today to speak in support of the Mill Park Development Project and request to approve the guaranteed maximum price of 8.98 million dollars. Division Midway Alliance collaborated with Portland Parks and Recreation as the culturally specific community outreach partner for the Mill Park Planning and Development. We provided support to the parks team with outreach, recruitment, and facilitation of three discussion sessions in 2021 and 2022. We reached out to community members from Arabic, Burmese, Nepali, Latinx, and Vietnamese communities, and the facilitation was done virtually and in person in seven different languages. About 70 members shared their feedback on each session. And I would like to share some key highlights from the discussion and the report. 54% 54 percentage of the participants reported that they speak a language other than English at home. This shows the diversity of East Portland and of Midway District. One of the top priorities shared at the final session was the need of community garden. 53% of the participants voted to have a community garden inside the park, and 98% strongly agree that the park will create a community gathering space for all cultures to come together and celebrate the diversity of Midway District. As you are aware, East Portland is in critical need of investment in many areas like safety, economic, and infrastructure development, and creating green spaces. Adding parks with amenities should be one of the topmost priority. Many of the renters with small children in the neighborhood have no access to nearby parks to go and play. Therefore, adding resources to build all features as shown in the final design is very crucial for our community's overall well-being. DMA recently held a community visioning session where 105 community members from eight different ethnic and language backgrounds participated in the discussion. The goal was to better understand their vision for infrastructure development in Midway District. What we learned is they really need access to more green spaces, and that was one of the five priorities that they shared at the visioning session. And it was great to see you, Commissioner Gonzalez, there. Thank you for your participation. And as you can see, DMA's community vision, diverse East Portlanders' dream of having more green spaces and the need for the park with better facilities are very much aligned. Therefore, I and our communities strongly support approving the full project cost for the construction of Mill Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Trevor Hopper, Chair, Mill Park Neighborhood Association.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler, Commissioners. My name is Trevor Hopper. For the record, Chair of the Mill Park Neighborhood Association. I put together a little bit of a history going back to 1959 on this site. And I'm going to read it because I'm not very good at talking. On August 21st, 1959, a recommendation was brought to the Board of the Multnomah County Planning Commission by the David Douglas School District for the county to purchase property for a park adjacent to a new elementary school that was to be built by the district. On September 1st, 1959, the Multnomah County Planning Commission unanimously voted to purchase property located in the vicinity of 117th and Mill Court. Land was purchased by the county in August and October of 61 to create Park 27. The land sat next to a new school, Mill Park Elementary, to be built in that same year. On November 14th, 1974, the Mill Park Site 27 Committee met, and it was announced that the following improvements were to be made in the summer of 1975. Grading, planting of grass, sprinkler system, removal of a barn. Other future improvements, a bike trail, aesthetic area, fence, parking, play equipment, a totlot, a multipurpose concrete slab for an outdoor theater, tennis courts, tree planting, benches, checkerboard tables, and a Swedish jogging trail were all considered.
And I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you speed it up just a bit? I don't want to lose my quorum. I definitely want us to support this. It's important what you're saying.
Certainly.
So I just speed it up. Thank you.
On December 3rd, 1974, the Mill Park Site Committee met to discuss a name for the park, and it was decided a contest would be held. The winner to receive $15 prize. Mill Park apparently won. List of goals was also listed for each year from 1975 to 79 for the gradual improvements. On December 11th, 1974, there was a press release issued by the Multnomah County Commission regarding these goals for the park. I believe sprinklers were installed, as I've heard that there is evidence of that on-site, though it's not been, it's long been out of commission. On November 19th, 86, Mill Park and Midland Park were annexed to the city of Portland with several other East Portland parks through the mid-1980s. In April of 2015, a survey was put out by then-Commissioner Amanda Fritz and the Portland Parks and Recreation regarding opportunity for three East Portland parks to receive a master plan. Mill Park and Midland Park were both listed as potential parks. This survey was brought back to Mill Park Neighborhood. We presented it to the Neighborhood Association Meeting, Division Midway Alliance Board Meeting, and the social media sites. On June 23rd, 2015, Commissioner first announced that Mill Park, Midland Park, and a property on Division and 150th would receive plans. In April of 2021, City Commissioner Rubio announced that Mill Park would be developed into the new park with completion in the summer of 2024. A planning committee was formed. Plans were set, and the building was projected to start in 2023. I moved into my house in Mill Park in 2001. As a father of four, the location was ideal, having an elementary school directly behind my house. Upon exploring the neighborhood, I discovered this barren park with dried-up grass, a woodchip trail, so dilapidated that there was a worn trail on the side of it because people couldn't walk on the trail. The trail had been funded by the Neighbor Association after annexation. I'd seen neighbors in motorized wheelchairs trying to navigate through the park from apartments that surround half the park. As sad a shape as the park is in, it is still fragmented by a diverse many who live around it. This new improved park will improve the lives of all who live in the community more than you can imagine. On behalf of my neighbors in Mill Park and in East Portland, I thank you all. Thank you, Commissioner Rubio, for choosing to build this park. Thank you, Commissioner Ryan, for getting us past the finish line with this. And thank you, former Commissioner Fritz, for breathing new life with this initial master plan. Thank you to everyone who's worked on this. It's very important to our neighborhood.
Thank you for your testimony, all of you. That completes invited testimony. Do we have open testimony?
We have one person.
Two minutes each, please name for the record.
Two minutes. We have John Wesley Pimentel. They were going to join in person. Is John Wesley here?
Very good. Any questions, colleagues? I'll entertain a motion to accept the report. We have a motion from Commissioner Ryan. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Rubio. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ryan.
Very enthusiastic about this. Thank you so much for the testimony. It's really good to hear the history, Trevor. I vote aye.
Gonzalez.
I vote aye.
Rubio.
Thank you for the testimony and the history. Very excited for this project. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. Report's accepted. The project moves forward. Good news. Thank you, everybody who testified today. And Robin, thank you for making the effort, even though you're not not feeling well today. We appreciate it. We have two items left. I think we can get through them relatively quickly here. Three six five, this is pulled from the, I'm sorry, four six five, pulled from the consent agenda. It is a second reading. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Extend authority of the Director of the Community Safety Division to execute grant agreements for gun violence reduction programs.
Four seventy, please. A non-emergency ordinance, first reading.
Mayor.
Yes.
We didn't call the roll on four sixty-five.
Oh, sorry.
Ryan.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Four seventy, non-emergency ordinance, first reading.
Amend Small Donor Elections Program Code to consolidate primary and general elections to align with the voter-approved charter amendments in Portland Measure 26-228.
Pulled by Ryan. This is Rubio's. Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, the purpose of this ordinance is to align the Small Donor Elections Program with the charter changes passed by voters in November. Following that, the Portland Election Commission got to work to determine the matching levels for each position. Because they are an independent commission, meaning they they are to operate without political interference, the discussions and, excuse me, the discussions and recommendations to this council rest solely with that body, even though we maintain our budget authority. So for that reason, that's that is the background on this. So I'll hand the floor over to my colleague, Commissioner Ryan, and also Director Motet on behalf of PEC is here to answer questions. She's online, so turn it over to Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. First, I apologize that I did this at the last minute. I really intended to do it when I looked at the agenda on Friday. And the reason is because I just wanted to make sure we had a moment in the public record on the budget aspect of this. We all know that we are moving towards a new form of government. There's a good chance we'll have many more people wanting to use the Small Donor Program. I'm a big advocate of the campaign finance reform that we've led in the city of Portland, and I just wanted to hear if we think we have enough money to cover what's coming up. And if we don't, we, I think it would be really challenging to change the rules halfway through campaign season. So I just thought it'd be good to have a little bit of a dialogue about this, and that's why we moved it off the consent agenda.
Very good.
Director Motet?
Yeah, sure. So when the Charter Commission was deliberating over possible changes. the, they received information from the program about whether or not the changes would increase or decrease the budget and by how much for the program. And the answer was that some things, mainly increasing the number of council seats from four to twelve, would increase. And then some things would decrease, going from a primary and a general down to just a primary would decrease. Also going to district council seats would, from, from citywide would decrease. And so overall, long term, the sense was that it would, it would be close to a wash and then question, and we'll gather data in two thousand and twenty four to figure out, you know, if the program costs a little bit more, about the same, a little bit less as a result of these changes. The change that definitely costs more but is merely temporary is the decision that the Charter Commission made to hold not just the mayoral election plus half of council in two thousand and twenty four and then the other half of council plus the auditor in two thousand and twenty six, but to in fact hold all of those elections in the two thousand and twenty four cycle altogether. That will dramatically increase the cost of the program, approximately double it. And, but that will just be for that one election cycle and then we go back to normal. So the program will be needing a temporary increase in funds in order to cover two thousand and twenty four. And then it's not inspecting a significant change in the amount of funds it needs after two thousand and twenty four to continue operating.
Did I miss, thank you so much, Susan. My, my question would be, did the planned budget for Small Donors Program compared to last year? Could you just give me some aggregate numbers?
Oh, so typically the program gets about one point four million dollars a year and that should, over a four year election cycle, be too much in the cheaper cycles and not enough in the expensive cycles. But they actually, the savings from one pays for the excess of the other. We carry forward any of our funds after the end of, at the end of a fiscal year. So far, the program has not been allocated significantly more funds in, in order to prepare for the two thousand and twenty four election cycle that will be bigger. There are more, there are more funding opportunities to do so. We also did carry forward about eight hundred thousand dollars more this last election cycle than we anticipated. So we have a little bit of a cushion built in, but we would like to see a bigger budget allocation in the next, the next couple of opportunities so that the program, if, if, if the program doesn't have quite enough money, it will do what it did during the two thousand and twenty special election, which is it had to do a modest decrease to the match caps for that council commissioner two seat in order to handle, you know, not having enough funding for the special election. So there, it has mechanisms to handle some underfunding. We would like to avoid any level of disastrous underfunding.
Just curious, because you mentioned it, what are the funding opportunities?
There is, if there is anything available at the fall bump, that would be one opportunity. The other opportunity would be the next fiscal year budget that is passed by council next year.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Do we have public testimony?
Unless someone's here to testify on it, no.
Not seeing anyone. This is a first reading of a non emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. We're adjourned until two P M.